Good evening, everybody. Our September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting is now called to order. We will have invocation and then pledge of allegiance. Can we stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Let us pray. Gracious God our Father, we come before you tonight and we just want to first of all say thank you, thank you for this day you've given us, another day that wasn't promised. And even as Scripture says that this is the day that the Lord has made, we will rejoice and be glad in it. Now, God, there are items on this agenda that are concerned or for the residents who are here today. God, I ask that we would, even as the word does say, that we would conduct the business of this great city decently and orderly. I ask that, that there be clarity and that there won't be any animosity. It's in your son Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Let's please join in for a side of the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda tonight is the reading and approval of the minutes from our last meeting on August twenty-third.
Mayor, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of August twenty-third and ask for approval of the same.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any comments, questions, counsel about the last meeting? All right, any public comments about this item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, Miss Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is special recognition, Mr. Maddox Johnson, Jr., division winner in the twelve U Junior Home Run Derby Finals. All right, now, thank councilwoman at large, if there's something you might want to say, then we'll present it.
Yes, I'm happy to say, I don't see them here at this time, but I'm happy to say that Maddox Johnson, Jr., okay, sorry to see you. I just want to say a little something about Maddox. Maddox James Johnson's abilities began with his father's father, who is John Johnson of Nauchus, Louisiana. John Johnson played spectacular baseball in junior high school and received a full scholarship to Southern University. The athletic ability continued in Maddox's father, James Johnson, here in Nauchus, where he was a part of the Dixie Youth Baseball and was blessed to be an amazing basketball player for the Nauchus Central High School Chiefs. He received a full scholarship to Louisiana Tech as a result of his basketball strength. So Maddox Johnson, Jr., really got his athletic abilities from his grandfather and then also his father. I also want to add that Maddox is a straight A student. He is attending school over in Garland, Texas, making straight As at Brandonburg Middle School in Garland, Texas. And I'm happy at this time to present Maddox with a certificate of honor for his outstanding achievement. He was the best division winner in the twelve U Junior Home Run Derby, and I think that's a great accomplishment for a twelve-year-old. So I'm going to read this. It says, "The city of Nauchus presented to Maddox Johnson, Jr., division winner in the twelve U Junior Home Run Derby Finals hosted by the Texas Rangers on this thirteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-one, and is signed by Ronnie Williams, Jr., mayor, and Betty Smith, councilwoman at large." And at this time, I'm going to ask the grandparents that they will please come forward and accept this, and the mayor to...
Both of us.
Come, please.
Congratulations. You should be proud, man. This is so much of Maddox, you've made great achievements.
I have one for Rachel, and my son and sister that I've seen. His name is Maddox James Johnson, not Junior. He's not Junior. This is Maddox James.
That's a Maddox flag.
Thank you all so much.
You want to turn it that way?
Thank you. We hope to see him in the major leagues.
All right, thank you all for that. Next item on the agenda, we have a proclamation. That's proclamation number eighty. Councilman Harrington.
This is proclamation declaring September, two thousand twenty-one, as ovarian cancer awareness month in the city of Nauchus, whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women and accounts for more deaths than any other gynecological cancers, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer every single year in the U.S., and whereas recognition of the warning signs are essential to an early detection and effective treatment, whereas early symptoms of ovarian cancer are commonly overlooked, public awareness and knowledge are essential to getting a diagnosis before the cancer worsens, and whereas it is critical that those affected by ovarian cancer have the proper resources and access to health care to prevent, detect, treat, and ultimately defeat ovarian cancer and all cancers, and whereas ovarian cancer and the hardship it brings have affected too many lives. This month, the city of Nauchus stands with everyone who has been touched by this disease, and we recognize all those committed to advancing the fight against this cancer through research, advocacy, and quality care. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Williams, Jr., mayor, and the Nauchus City Council do hereby proclaim September, two thousand twenty-one, as ovarian cancer awareness month in the city of Nauchus and encourage all citizens to honor ovarian cancer patients, survivors, their families, and caregivers, and remember those who have lost their lives to this devastating disease. I move to adopt proclamation number eighty of two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is Ms. Leah here today?
I am, with teal.
Okay, there you go with your teal. Ms. Leah, if you can tell us your first and last name, and we'll give you a few minutes to speak and then...
He's starting the timer. I'm Leah Lenz. Hi. I'm...what else was I supposed to say? I'm Leah Lenz, that's it?
Right, right, yeah.
Again, that was good. All right, I was making sure, I want to get it right. Thank you, Mayor Williams, for having me, and thank you, Stacy. It's so good to work with you guys. This is wild, guys. We did bus stop in this building a long ago for community theater. How different, right? This is incredible. So I love our community and I love coming. Pre-COVID, I could bring cookies. That was good, right? When I could bring treats. I look forward to being able to do that again. But I wanted to just, I was gathering up before I left, and these things are just all over my house right now because what I've learned from doing this with the city is you don't compete with the car show, you stay out of the way, right, for the car show. So the city, we will bring teal after the car show this weekend, and I'm excited that we're expanding with the permission of the mayor and after, hopefully that would be approved just a block over by the church, maybe. It's in writing. That was not the way to do that. But I want to tell you what we've already done. At Trinity, you guys helped us turn teal with nails, and that was incredible. With the Louisiana School for Math, Science, and the Arts, we started wellness programming, telling students to know their history, talk with your families, because men, women, everyone is affected when you lose people you love, and you're going through treatment and you're fighting when you don't lose. Leah Jackson was the beginning with ribbons that she brought from her mother, who knew exactly how to store these correctly, and I'm, as you can tell by the wrinkles, I'm still learning. And then others came from donations from the city florist, and because the mayor has been so willing to continue to support the turn teal initiative across the nation, we have these lovely ribbons that my sister's going to help us in renewing. Thank you, Robin and Shane. But the teal is also from our campuses and our students. At Northwestern State University, one of the games, turn teal, and they release balloons for all cancers, and students across the Louisiana School Campus tied ribbons and helped us create some...I needed to see some movement on those poles, so I want to invite, need to be a little bit more interesting. So I just want to thank our community and let you know that because we have these roots, because we have the strength, getting through hard times is a lot easier, and thank you for your support, and I hope that you'll all talk with your families about your histories, not only with ovarian cancer, but with all cancers, because we all know the earlier the better, right? So I look forward to nails again at Trinity after this messy stuff is over, and look forward to teals across our community again coming after the car show on the poles. We get a little bit longer stretch, hopefully, right? If we do after, right, maybe we'll see. I'm not going to push it. Thank you, guys, so much for your support, and we'll be with you hopefully again next year.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited. Counsel, any...okay, no, go ahead, we'll do that. Comments, questions, counsel?
No. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
So happy to be in support of this. This is really an important initiative, and we thank you for leading that effort. Any public comments, questions for Ms. Leah Lenz?
If I don't thank my mom, I'll be, I think, in regret.
Oh, you gotta do that. Don't want you in trouble.
My mom brought me a prevention magazine, and two thousand eleven, and asked me to do something, and she went down to a Walmart in Winfield and bought a bunch of ribbons. So we've definitely come a long way. So I definitely thank my mother for that charge and y'all's continued support.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion hanging out there. There were no public comments or questions. Roll call vote, Miss Stacy.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Great, all right. Yes, please.
Okay, pictures, yes.
Get a little sound.
Yes, sir. This one is...
I think we all can hear this one.
Did I guess there are really... Oh. Yes. Does I have one without...is it okay if I want air?
All right.
Well, I'm... Sorry. I'm trying. I'm trying.
All right, I believe we have one more proclamation. Oh, a couple more. Councilman Nielsen, moving on to the next item on the agenda, proclamation number eighty-one. Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number eighty of two thousand twenty-one is a proclamation declaring September, two thousand twenty-one...whoops, I'm on the wrong one again. Hold on. Resolution number eighty-one of two thousand twenty-one, proclamation declaring September sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, as Mike Williams Day in the city of Nauchus, whereas the Women's Resource Center, a pregnancy-help medical clinic, was founded in nineteen eighty-nine as a nonprofit organization to offer services, assistance, and guidance to young women facing difficult life situations, most often due to unplanned pregnancies, and whereas in two thousand six, the Women's Resource Center became a pregnancy-help medical clinic that offered material assistance as well as obstetrical ultrasound, prenatal education, breastfeeding assistance, and postpartum follow-up, and whereas the staff of the Women's Resource Center consists of trained volunteers, including registered nurses, as well as the donated time of Dr. Martin Avalas, who oversees medical issues of the center, and whereas the Women's Resource Center is the largest organization of its type and scope in central Louisiana, whereas the Women's Resource Center will be hosting the annual Celebration of Life fundraising gala on Thursday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at the Nauchus Event Center, at which Christian comedian Mike Williams will be the keynote speaker, and whereas the city of Nauchus wishes to honor Mr. Mike Williams in his life crusades and taking time for his busy schedule to promote the mission of the Women's Resource Center. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Williams, Jr., mayor of the city of Nauchus, do hereby proclaim Thursday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Mike Williams Day in the city of Nauchus in honor of the dedication and contributions of Mr. Mike Williams, and I move to adopt resolution number eighty-one of two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. We'll put it to the vote in just a second, but we do have Ms. Jennifer Luna with the Women's Resource Center, who is with us today, and certainly as she comes to the microphone, glad to have her here in the city of Nauchus and all of the initiatives that they work on there at the Women's Resource Center. Please state your first and last name, Jennifer, even though I just said it.
Yes, Jennifer Luna. It's so great to be here with you all. I'm the executive director at the Women's Resource Center, and like Mr. Nielsen had said, we provide a hundred percent free and confidential resources to anyone, any woman who thinks or is that she is pregnant. We exist to provide information, education, emotional, material, and spiritual support to empower individuals to make life-affirming choices. We do this through so many different in-depth visits, covering prenatal and parenting information, free pregnancy tests, free ultrasounds, parenting classes, breastfeeding classes, and numerous community partnerships. A big thing, which we have every single year, is our Celebration of Life Gala. That's coming up on Thursday, and we do this every year as sort of celebration and honoring for our keynote speakers that come and speak on our behalf. A big thing that I kind of was reminiscing on this past year is just kind of realizing as we're coming out of summer that this affects everybody. We've had, in particular, only in our summer months, twenty-nine teenagers under the age of sixteen come to us that were pregnant. This is, these are our daughters, granddaughters, these are our cousins, these are our students, these are our children in our community, especially knowing Nauchus' high poverty rate. This is a community that is strong with each other, and it starts with every one of us to help support and what that looks like. We help with scholarships, we help with jobs, we help with housing. We want to ensure that every mom in this community, no matter how young or how old that they may be in their circumstances, that we are there for them every step of the way in order to achieve a better life. And so we're just so happy to be here, and I thank you for that time, and if you ever need any information about us, feel free to call, I'd be happy to talk to you. Thank you.
Again, Jennifer, thank you so much. Yeah. Thank you, Jennifer, for what you all do for women, I think not only in this community, but other parts, surrounding areas, and my church has in the past given and donated because we believe the calls that you all are doing over there, especially services you provide for women who are pregnant. Counsel, any comments, questions at this time?
No. Great programs.
Always a good event.
Really always great, always well-attended.
Yeah.
All right, any public comments or questions for Ms. Luna? Mrs. Luna, excuse me? All right, seeing none. Roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
She'll be the last one, though. All right, next item on the agenda is a...it's another proclamation, and that's by Councilman P T. That's number eighty-two. Councilman P T, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number eighty-two of two thousand twenty-one, proclamation declaring August twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-one as Sylvia Morrow Day in the city of Nauchus. Whereas on August twentieth, in the year of the Lord, two thousand and twenty-one, our heavenly Father called to rescue Miss Sylvia Morrow, and whereas in the year two thousand, Miss Morrow was elected to serve as city councilwoman for District Three and to be the first female council member for the city of Nauchus, whereas Miss Morrow continued to serve her district with ample dedication for five terms until May thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and whereas Miss Morrow worked with a total of two mayors and a total of ten councilpersons, whereas Miss Morrow was involved in numerous community and professional organizations and received many awards for a love to her work and to her community, whereas Miss Morrow was a woman of devotion and commitment who was an inspiration to all she served in her district, God, and her family. Whereas the city of Nauchus recognizes Miss Morrow, Miss Morrow's dedication, perseverance, and talents, as well as the value of her services she rendered at all levels, whereas the city of Nauchus expresses our sincere appreciation to Miss Morrow for her unwavering loyalty and service to this community. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Williams, do hereby proclaim August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, to be Sylvia Morrow Day, and I move for the adoption of resolution number eighty-two.
I'll second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to on this with the Sylvia Morrow Day. Counsel, you got any questions or comments at this time? I know we had the meeting following her death, we did a moment of silence, and some had some comments, so I don't know if there's anything else, counsel, from you.
I don't know what more we can add other than she will be missed. A lot of us know, you know, we...she was a lady to be reckoned with, but Miss Morrow was a great person, and she did a lot of wonderful things in her community and as well as throughout the city of Nauchus, and she, her hard work will greatly be missed.
And just so you know, we presented the same proclamation at her Celebration of Life, and we said we would come back and formalize it before the city council at the next meeting, and so that's what we're doing here. Any public comments about this proclamation? All right, seeing none. Roll call vote, Miss Stacy.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
Yes.
All right, that carries as well. Is anybody from Miss Morrow's family today? All right, we'll get it, we'll get that and the other one presented to the family, so thank you, counsel, for that. All right, please allow me some mayor privilege on this one, and we'll get to the next item on the agenda, because I know the room is going to clear out after this. But I want to say, because I'm Peacock proud and thankful of everybody who had a hand in this, and some of you may have seen it, some of you may have not, but our fire rating improved, and that's really beneficial to the residents. And to be specific, we went from a three to a very strong two. In fact, we're just three points away from a one, and so how the rating is, you know, I guess the weakest number in chief. Won't you come, let me not even try to be you, come on, you go ahead and tell us how that works, but we're just so happy to report that and wanted everybody to hear that tonight.
According to the ratings, it goes from one to ten. Ten is the worst rating, and one is the best. We had a, my first fire in ninety-six, we had a three, then we went to a two. We retrograded one year back to a three, then we came back to a strong two with eighty-seven point thirty-seven, that's four. So it's eighty, ninety, point ninety-nine is the highest two, and the ninety's up as a one, so we did really well. So it's, there's a lot of work done in that, and a lot of good cooperation through the city departments. We all work together. It's not just a fire rate. So we depend on the water, we depend on the streets, we depend on a lot of different people to achieve that rate, so I think they showed a good, they showed a good cooperation in the city, not just the fire department, but for everybody. And of course, you know, Dallas, everything, true, man, like the fire station, but you know, while they're still running, while they're still doing their turn and things like that, doing their inspections, so we don't just put out fires, we're like, we're spectating, and we do things like that, and we turn, so we stay quite busy, so it's a, it's business for the fire department and the city.
Thank you, Chief, and Chief recognizes, yeah. Great work, Chief, and all others. Like you said, it couldn't just be the fire department. All right, next item on the agenda, and since I don't get to read much and nobody's assigned to read it, I'll just read what's here. It's a planning and zoning appeal. Planning and zoning appeal. The city council to review, wait, applicant-owner Roanoke Development LLC, David Strange. The purpose is, the city council, as you can see up here, is to review a decision of the Nauchus Planning and Zoning Commission at the August tenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, that denied the application regarding twelve point four, four hundred and thirty-six acres on St. Maurice Lane to develop the Glendale subdivision, single-family residential subdivision, thirty-seven lots. And before we get into this, I want to have just a few remarks, and then we'll allow others to do the same. With so much discussion about the next item on the agenda, I feel compelled to give a few remarks, remarks, excuse me, before opening the floor for discussion and upcoming city council vote. Our city is vibrant, and as such, we will attract others who desire to invest here. We are and will be, and we are and will continue to be as open to growth and expansion as possible. There are times when the voice of the public needs to be heard concerning such projects, and I have done my due diligence in this matter to ensure that all parties have been given an opportunity, a fair opportunity, to dialogue. About a year ago, I met with Mr. Strange, his realtor at the time, Chantrelle Rock, of course, you know, planning and zoning, and we all met to hear about this proposed subdivision. After listening to what Mr. Strange desired to do, Chantrelle informed him as to what he needed to do in terms of the application, making application in the city of Nauchus. Fast forward to August tenth, as I just read, the Planning and Zoning Commission denied Mr. Strange's application, and a couple weeks ago, I called Mr. Strange, questioned his presence, so that... And a couple of weeks ago, I called Mr. Strange, questioned his presence so that members of the council could ask any questions. We had two members of the council who were there, and a few residents got wind that we were meeting with Mr. Strange. I thought it was important to make sure the council can ask those questions, you know, prior to the meeting. And a few residents asked to be there. I thought it was a wonderful idea. I called Mr. Strange. He said he, he'll take part in it. And I think we had about five or six residents who came, and it was, you know, it was, I think, a healthy dialogue. Statement was made, we could agree to disagree, but I don't think anything got out of hand. Questions were asked, Mr. Strange responded. So, I think that was necessary, because there are times when we, in fact, will not necessarily be on the same page. But as I said, my role has been to be a fair umpire. When it comes to Glendale subdivision, I think people should know what they are against. Vice versa, people should know what they are for if they support this proposal, but it should be clear. In that vein, I want to kind of lay some ground rules, because we want to certainly protect constitutional rights here, but we also want to think about the interest of time and consider that there are a few other items on the agenda here tonight. Now, obviously, only one person speaking at a time. I think we've got a wonderful crowd here, who knows that and will abide by that. I will allow Mr. Strange to address the audience first. He has a PowerPoint that's already uploaded that he's given to us, same PowerPoint that I think was presented at the Planning and Zoning Meeting and shared with members of the city council. He has told us it goes about, about 10 minutes, and so we'll allow that to happen. And then I think that there is, Mr. Jack McCain is going to be the first primary speaker in opposition to the proposed Glendale subdivision. I believe there are some others who want to speak as well. But again, just in the interest of time, we want to make sure that we are not necessarily redundant. And so, he has told me that some would want to speak, and we'll give up to three minutes for that. We'll give Mr. McCain a few more minutes, since he'll be the primary speaker for the opposition, okay? We do have, just to let you know, we have law enforcement here, just in case anything get out of hand. I don't think that will happen, but I just wanted to make sure we knew. And we've got, we've got the gavel as well, okay? All right, so we want, again, to make sure that this is a respectful, respectful meeting, okay? All right, so first, we're going to call Mr. Strange. Ms. Stacy, as you're coming, Mr. Strange, and again, I would ask that everybody who is coming to the microphone, you would state your first and last name, and if you're coming more than once, I really only think Mr. Strange is, will probably come more than once during the Q and A. But state your first and last name. Ms. Stacy is going to be our timekeeper. We're going to set it for 10 minutes for Mr. Strange, all right? And I would ask that everybody who is going to speak, please speak in the microphone, if that means as well lowering your, taking off your mask. Speak in the microphone for the audience at home primarily, because there are times, if you read the comments at the bottom, where they cannot hear us. And so, a lot of times, that's because we're not speaking in the mic, or the mask kind of, no pun intended, but it kind of masks your voice sometimes. So, we're ready for you, Mr. Strange. State your first and last name, please, sir.
David Strange, here on behalf of growing up in Glendale, Glendale.
I think it's, is he on the?
Is it?
Talk a little bit, Mr.?
Better check.
I don't think we can hear you well.
What Steve's, he's trying to get?
Steve is adjusting the volume right now. Is it ready to go?
Test one, two.
Okay, that one sounds.
Got it. Thank you. Can you, can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay.
Wait, hold on. Can y'all hear? Talk again a little bit, Mr. Strange.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Yeah, I don't think, if we can't hear it here, I know the audience at home can't hear, too.
I guess they have to hold it in his hand.
Just talk loud. Better now. Can you hear me now?
Just lean over, just lean over and speak into the mic, that may help. Just lean over and speak.
Can you hear me now?
Can hear you. Yes.
It's better?
Little louder.
Better?
Yeah. Okay. I'll try not to scream. My name is David Strange, and I am here on behalf of our proposed Glendale subdivision. And first, I'd like to thank the mayor and members of the council for having us here tonight to have a dialogue about this. As the mayor mentioned, we did come back about two weeks ago and meet with some of the additional residents that are, are living next to the area where we're proposing this development, and, and had a healthy conversation. And, you know, we, we were able to go back and really try and do what we could to incorporate some of those comments that we heard into our plan, and see what we could do to be the best possible neighbor that we can going forward. So, with that background, real quickly, I would like to try to go through this presentation just to show everybody kind of the nuts and bolts of what we're doing here. Glendale subdivision is a 36-home, single-family subdivision located on the parcel of ground right there off of St. Maurice. It's all curb and gutter, underground utilities, street lighting, sidewalks. It's a very nice, modernly equipped subdivision. The demographics of this particular census tract, the area median income is $69,000. The total construction development cost per each house is about $250,000. And we have obtained an investment from Berkshire Hathaway to buy the tax credits for this development to help in the financing. They are committed to proceed with this development. They've done all their underwriting, and we have a firm commitment from them to, to invest. You go to the next one. All right, so during the initial time period after construction, the partnership, which will consist of myself and Berkshire Hathaway, we will pay for the, the insurance and taxes on the houses. We maintain the grounds, which includes a ground maintenance contract, so that it's mowed once a week, all of the onsite maintenance of the houses, the pest control, termite spraying, all that kind of stuff. Everything is paid for by the partnership initially, and, and the average rent on one of the houses is $850. You can go to the next one. All right, these are just some of the listings we found, just on an easy search of Zillow, of what rental rates for certain properties are within the, the city of Natchitoches, which is not uncommon to, to any other city that we do developments in. There's a real aging housing stock, there's a shortage of housing, and so it drives up the rates, and, and so you can see that there are pretty expensive rents for not a lot in return. We're going to build single-family houses. We have a three-bedroom house and a four-bedroom house. These are photographs from our development in Tupelo, Mississippi, which is exactly like we're going to build here. These are the same houses and floor plans. That's the interior, and as you can see, it's streamlined, modern. So, why are we here? We're here to appeal the decision of the August 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The issue before the zoning commission that night was whether or not our subdivision plat met the city of Natchitoches zoning ordinance. Before the planning and zoning meeting, there were statements made by Ms. Chantrelle Rock and Mr. Charles Whitehead, the chairman of the planning commission, that in all respects, the plat that we submitted met all the requirements of the city subdivision ordinance. We were requesting no variances. The subdivision plat had passed around to all the department heads within the city, from Public Works to Fire Department. Every, the city engineer looked at the drainage calculations, and everything that we submitted was in full compliance with the subdivision ordinance, and it was anticipated that it was going to be an administrative approval of our site plan that we submitted as being fully compliant. The next one, please. This is not a zoning issue. The, the subject parcel of land is zoned R1 residential, and under the city's zoning ordinance, the minimum square footages for R1 zoning are 7,200 square foot lots. That's the most restrictive residential zoning ordinance requirement on, under the city's current zoning code. Our lots are, on average, 8,400 square feet, so they're larger than what is required under the city ordinances. That's our, you know, again, I just want to reiterate that in reviewing this, the subdivision ordinance, the requirements were that we engage a local engineering firm and surveying firm, which we did. We have all the requisite meetings with the, the city department heads. As the mayor mentioned, we started this process almost a year ago. There's been a lot of due diligence done on our part to, to get to this point. We obtained all the approvals relative to any, any drainage requirements that we have. Go ahead. So, so, what's the problem? You know, I think that in, in the article, and as I understood, that Mr. McCain's going to speak after I do, that, that he kind of summarized the issue best in, in a copy of a newspaper article that I was presented, and that the issues are, as I read the article, that this type of development should be located next to the housing authority, that detention ponds will cause drowning, whereas the truth of the matter is detention ponds are mandated by the city subdivision ordinance. We could not have one, even if we chose. By having one is just one of the numerous reasons of why this plat complies, because we followed the exact letter of the law with respect to the ordinance. The, the current fire chief looked at our plans and, and looked at our turning radius for the fire trucks, and everything complies with the current city ordinance and what the state fire marshal's opinions would be rendered as, with respect to single entrance subdivisions. Vehicular congestion, it's going to cause a lot of traffic. Again, R1 is the least restrictive zoning within the city. You've got commercial, you know, if this was commercially zoned, someone could build a Walmart there. Arguably, that would be a lot more traffic. Any type of, of industrial or any other kind of zoning would, by its nature, cause significantly more traffic than, than this is going to cause. It's the least causing traffic zoning there is. And 50% of the individuals that live in these homes will be commuting to work at times that are not congruent with, with when traffic is going to be for the schools. If the school's let out at 3:00 in the afternoon, most of the individuals are returning from home from work at 5:00 o'clock. So, it, it's, it's not conflicting traffic patterns. And lastly, that, that St. Maurice is a substandard street. The, the truth of the matter is, St. Maurice is a legally conforming, city-maintained street by the city of Natchitoches. All right? So, what's the real problem? So, what, what NIMBYism is, is it means it's a mentality adopted by those who reject certain changes in their communities. It's reflective of residents' fears of worst-case scenario effects or falsehoods circulated by those who oppose the development. Despite countless studies, and there are countless of them, which prove inclusionary housing practices promote increased property values, decrease crime, increase population, and increase economic opportunities, NIMBYs will always retreat to, we are pro-development, just not here. That said, when we came to the neighborhood meeting two weeks ago, we listened to these concerns. We went back to the engineer. We made sure that everything we were submitting was completely like it was supposed to be. But one of the things that the neighbor said is, we would really like for this to be a homeownership. As we originally conceived this development, it was not. We were going to rent, lease these properties for a period of up to 45 years. We had originally committed to the state to that obligation. After talking to the residents and their desire for us to attempt to change this to a homeownership program, we contacted the state, sent them an email, and said, can we switch this to homeownership? Go to the next slide. The state replies back, yes, you can. Go to the next one. So, what does that mean? What, what does that look like? Okay? Well, it works like this. These houses are going to cost $250,000 approximately to build. If you were to go buy a $250,000 house, you would make a down payment, and after your down payment, you would pay your own mortgage and insurance, house upkeep and maintenance for 30 years, the life of your mortgage. The total cost of that, with interest and everything, over a 30-year period, you'd have paid about $540,000 for that house. We all know that interest i- is, is the lion's share of the mortgage payment. So, for the initial 15 years, these houses can be rented for $850. During that time period, we, as the owners, pay the insurance and taxes, so that the only cost to the resident is the $850 in rent. After 15 years, the resident can then assume a mortgage of an additional 15 years, so it's the same 30-year period, and the payment of that mortgage, plus now they're going to pay the taxes and insurance, would be $850. So, the payment doesn't change with respect to the tenant. It's not a bait and switch. No one's getting into anything that they, they, they can't otherwise afford to get into. Everyone knows upfront what the responsibility is of both parties and the ultimate cost in the end. So, over the same 30-year period, by going about homeownership in this manner, as allowed under this program, the total cost of that home is substantially less of about $340,000, because you didn't pay taxes, insurance, maintenance, and upkeep during the first 15 years. All right. So, lastly, the law of the city of Natchitoches is its ordinances. Ordinance number 1102 says that a subdivision plat that is submitted that meets all the city requirements shall be approved. The planning and zoning did not enforce-
Mr. Strange, you're, you're at 10 minutes. Are you going to have some?
One minute.
Okay.
Yep. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not enforce the law. Instead, they took the law into their own hands. The law requires them performing administrative plat approval to act on an impartial decision-maker, free from bias and conflicts of interest, to make decisions based upon the facts of the case and not vocal opposition. Why have laws if decisions are made based upon who yells the loudest? That's a hollering contest, not due process. The city council sits tonight as an appellate court and must decide, did the Planning and Zoning Commission violate the laws and consider matters not relevant to the issues of administrative plat approval, impart their own personal bias, and succumb to vocal opposition? In rendering their decision, each commissioner on the record stated they were personally opposed to development regardless of its compliance with the laws. Due process was violated by the Planning Commission. I understand the concerns of the neighbors, but they are not relevant to the simple issue of whether or not our plat meets the subdivision ordinance. I believe this council has the legal duty in accordance with the laws of the city of Natchitoches and fundamental due process to reverse the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I also believe this development will act as a catalyst for future economic growth and to create homes which many families can continue to occupy and call Natchitoches their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strange, and thank you, audience, for that. I think we were mostly, very mostly respectful. I appreciate that. Now, Mr. Strange, we're going to bring up Mr. Jack McCain. That's you, Mr. Jack McCain. And state your first and last name, please. I think we discussed Mr. McCain up to five minutes, because I don't think you needed as much necessarily.
Can you actually take your mask off?
Hello?
Is that working?
And as we mostly were with Mr. Strange, I would ask the same for Mr. McCain, to let him have his remarks.
And I'm going to put it right there.
So, I don't need to use the mic?
Nope.
Okay. All right. I'm Jack McCain. Let me reminisce just a little bit. Being back in this room is, is quite a trip for me, because I spent 24 years attending council meetings in this room. It's just a lot fancier now than it was when I worked here. It's just really nice, Mayor, really nice. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and to address you and the council on the issues that concern us. Now, I know I'm under a four-minute limitation, so I won't talk too much.
Actually, five, sir.
Pardon me?
Five.
Oh, five, okay. I'm going to really kind of serve as the moderator, and I'm going to have people come up and talk about different issues, and there will be no redundancy if we can, can help I want to make two comments. Our latest count is 1,097 petitions received from our citizens in opposition to this project. And that's, that's a sizable number, I think. One other comment I'll make, the council has never, during my years and those thereafter, has never overridden or turned over a unanimous planning commission decision. It's never been done. I've researched that. I've researched that. So I, I think that's significant. Your planning commission is a group of good folks that work hard. They look into the issues and study them, and then they come up with their recommendation. And I, I think their recommendation should be respected. As far the, what was that legal term that our good friend used? Arbitrary and capricious. You know, I resent that on behalf of our planning commission. Those people work hard, and for you to come in here with that legal term of arbitrary and capricious, I, I just don't think it's justified. I would like to, to call on, is Janice Bolton still here? Janice, if, if you would come to the podium. I want to correct one thing. The attractive redheaded lady said this was once a bus station. That's wrong. The bus station was back over here, and we had to remove it when we built the event center. This was Lieber's Department Store. You've got to be an old timer to know that kind of stuff. Janice?
And, and just for, so we know that this, with people coming up, Ms. Bolton and whoever else, would have to standard three minutes that we typically give. So you've got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Janice Bolton. I was born and raised in Natchitoches. I am a local real estate broker for 15 years. I am a former member of the city of Natchitoches Planning Commission. I have volunteered and contributed to this community all my life, particularly the last 35 years in various boards, commissions, volunteer efforts. I believe we need to figure out a way to grow, but this in essence is an apartment development of houses, and my concern is that we may need to revisit how these are applied for, because most of these people are here because they don't know what it's going to be. The only thing that was on an issue was a subdivision. Maybe the city needs to have more requirements and more questions answered in advance of an application, because tonight he's saying there's on-site management. I've never heard that before. It was a different story at the planning commission meeting. I'm a landlord. My family owns seven properties within proximity to this new development. I'm not against housing. Of course, I'm a realtor. Of course, we need more housing. I don't know how you can afford to rent a $250,000 house for $850 a month. I can't do it, but I know just the small amount of rentals I have is difficult to manage without being local. So is it onsite maintenance that's going to come and mow once a week, or is it onsite management? I haven't heard that. Down the road, what's going to be built? Who's going to manage it? What's it going to look like? Maybe we need to revamp our application process so that a lot more of the information is provided in advance, so people aren't questioning it. And if you'll excuse me, I have a family visitation at the funeral home going on, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for being here. And Mr. McCain, I know you're managing who's speaking next. Mr. Strange, please take note, as I think you are, of questions that arise, so that you could provide the answer when we get you back up. Okay, sir? All right.
I'd like to call to the podium, Ms. Latisha Walker, has some comments for us.
And do we have a better mic, just so audience at home can hear everything? Can you, that one's not working? It's good, it was good. Yeah, I know going on back and forth with it, okay. Well, just, can you get closer, Ms. Walk, Mrs. Walker?
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Hold it up a little.
Yes, hold it. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you better.
Is that better?
Okay. Y'all making me talk on this thing, and I don't like microphones.
Please state your first and last name.
Okay.
Get started.
My name is Latricia Walker, and I live at 905 St. Maurice Lane. I'm here to, to speak about some of my personal concerns with this project, as well as just some concerns in general from the community. But one of the things I want to bring up, and I know I emailed all of you a, a letter after our meeting that we had two weeks ago, and then hearing some things again tonight, some of those things I said in my letter may flip-flop back and forth, because I think some of the things he has said is flip-flopping back and forth. But to start off with, I want to just make everyone aware, too, that in 2006, we proposed to subdivide our property on St. Maurice Lane, and we were going to do, initially, we had actually proposed to do 100 elderly apartments there. We went through the application process. We went through the surveying. We met with all of the city officials. We met all of the requirements to have the project done. We went before the planning and zoning, and it was denied. We appealed, it was denied. The same time, we also have property on Texas Street that runs back to Sabine Street. We applied for 12 units to be done there. We have property on Gold Street, and we had 22 units we applied for to be done there. Those were approved. We came back in 2007, and we downsized our project on St. Maurice Lane to 10 apartments. It was still denied. And it was denied for all the same reasons that it was, this project was denied with the planning and zoning recently. It was denied for the same reasons that all the other projects that have came up over the last few years were denied. Back in 2006, 2007, you know, we had only lived in our homes since 2005. We didn't really know the community, you know, all that well. You know, we were younger, we're thinking about how we can invest, make some money, do things like that, you know, being part of the construction entity and everything. And so we were just kind of looking at ways of using property that we, we owned and, you know, making, making money. And the room was packed like this. Everybody was against our project. We felt like we were discriminated against at first, but after living there and driving up and down that street, our kids going to school there, all those concerns that continue to be brought up 16 years later are still the same concerns now, and we continue to live through them. And I don't feel like we were discriminated against. I feel like most of these residents that are here now, I think they have lived there longer than what we have. And so they just knew from, from being there. And now, since we've been there, we also know. Can I have a few more minutes?
No.
I don't know if anybody else has to speak or not.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you go a little bit. Two more minutes.
I'm going to skip all of the, you know, everybody knows about the traffic and all that kind of stuff. I want to point out that, I was going back and I was looking at the ordinances, and it talks about all the streets be constructed with complete curbing, guttering, and storm damage, that open roadside drainage ditches are prohibited. And then it goes on to say something about additional requirements. The planning commission reserves the right to require higher street standards and specifications so as to provide adequate construction to carry the traffic which can reasonably be anticipated to use such existing or proposed major street. I think St. Maurice Lane connected to this project is considered a major street, and maybe we should have these requirements met on St. Maurice Lane before we consider more subdivision development in that property area, as well as any of the property that's further down St. Maurice Lane in front of our home. Because there's a lot of open field, a lot of property there that could potentially be put as subdivision, but until these things are done, I don't believe more subdivisions should be conducted on St. Maurice Lane. I know that the city has the revitalization project going on to upgrade many streets throughout the city, and I think that's a, you know, hats off to y'all, that's an awesome project. But, and I think those areas probably need work done before St. Maurice Lane does, you know? But still, we have the open ditches, we have all of that going on. I don't know which way to talk about if this is going to be for rent or if it's going to be for sale, because it's flip-flopped every time I've heard Mr. Strange speak. So I, I don't know about that. Personally, I'm against the rentals. I prefer homeownership, but I think it also needs to be affordable. He talks about the median income being $69,000. It may be for that area, but for Natchitoches itself, it's more like $28,000. And I think we need to consider Natchitoches as a whole, because those are going to be the people moving into that neighborhood, not the ones that are already there. And then, I know my time is pretty much up, but I just want to say one last thing to close. I was told at the meeting a couple of weeks ago that they met all of the requirements, as he talked about tonight, that he met all the requirements, and so his project should pass, that our project should have passed, and that the others over the last several years should have also passed, because they met those requirements. If that was the case, we should just have a checkmark application and approval, but we don't. We also have public meeting hearings in which the citizens get to voice our reasons for being for something or being opposed to it. And as you can see, there's a lot of us who are opposed to it. I'm not sure who all's in favor of it. I have not heard anybody come up and publicly speak about being in favor of this project. And I just think that us being able to have our voice in this is part of the process. It's not just about meeting all those requirements there. That's just part of it.
Thank you.
With that being said, I want to ask each and every one of you to consider the amount of opposition and the reasons for continued opposition, opposition for this project in this location, and I respectfully ask for you to vote against this project for this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you, Latisha. I'll call to the podium at this point, Mr. Carl Jones.
Terry.
Terry, okay. All right. Terry McQuillan.
Hi, my name is Terry McQuillan, and I live at 704 St. Maurice Lane.
Three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
I don't need that. I got this. I, I can talk loud enough. And I've been there a little bit longer than some of the rest of them. I've been there since I was 12 years old, and I'm 71 now. I've been there 59 years. So it does flood, and I, every time we get a big rain, and probably this, later on this week, it'll get just about within a half inch of coming in my front door. So it does flood. I've been on the four-wheeler going all around there. You can't get through the drainage ditches on the other end. Now, I know the city, the jury and all that is, the city's put up $200,000 to make a new ditch. Well, that needs to be done before we put this house up. Y'all have put up $200,000 for a study on the water plant. We're almost at maximum deal on it. That seems like to me that'd be a deal. The city police and the fire department is understaffed with men, and we, we just don't need that. We need to change the new rules or the regulations that the thing goes by, that all the things that he says is, you know, a 60-foot lot. I'm on a 90-foot lot, and I can only get a truck and trailer down one side of it. So, you know, and just like he said, the retention ponds will not hold water. I worked with the volunteer fire department for 25 years. A baby will drown in less than two inches of water. A grown man will drown in it if he trips and falls and can't get up. So you can drown in a pond, even though it's not holding water all the time. So that there is wrong. And like I say, there's plenty of problems. You drive down there on Monday when the garbage truck comes, you zigzag in just like that. If we're in a vehicle, we've got to stop and let the garbage truck go. The streets are not near wide enough, and we paid the money to do my house where I'm living in. But that was many years ago. But anyhow, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Terry. Carl, are you ready to talk now?
Mr. Carl Jones, I know you'll state your, you'll state your first and last name.
Carl Jones.
Three minutes, sir.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
I don't think we still know what we're getting. First time Mr. Strange came to town, he said it was a gateway to ownership, 15 years, and then you can buy it with a nominal fee. We made some inquiries, planning and zoning, we had a good discussion. And then the mayor arranged for us to be able to meet with him. He changed his plan. It's going to be a 45-year rental. Your income had to be $48,000 to be able to rent from him. I guess that's changed. He just says it's $69,000 now. $69 was the maximum income. If you were renting, you got a raise, you was making $66, you got a $70,000 salary, you had to move out. But you had to have a minimum income of $48,000, earned income. So we still don't know what we're getting. Initially, he said it was going to be brick houses. Now it's going to be hardy plank and brick. He said the rent was going to be $850 a month, not an average $850 a month, up to $975. So we don't know what he's planning to do. So where is he going to sign his name to tell us what he is actually going to do? He's not. He's going to do what he wants to do once it's approved. He can build anything he wants. He keeps changing his story, and he will continue to change his story. That's one of our greatest concerns. The location is the wrong place. We all know that. We've had testimony after testimony. We have had denial after denial. There are people down here today that did look at building a subdivision on St. Maurice Lane. They did their legwork, and they were told it won't be approved. Since they were a part of this community, since they were a part of this community, just like Ms. Walker said, they accepted that and went on their way. But this man won't quit. So we have some questions, and that's what we get into, question and answer.
Yeah, he's going, I think he's documenting questions.
But just think about that. You don't know what you're getting.
Like, you don't live on St. Maurice Lane either, do you?
No.
Not in your backyard.
Doesn't matter.
So, that's what I'm saying. It's, that's not your one good point. You know-
No. I live on the corner of St. Clair and Eastfield, busiest corner in West Natchitoches, other than-
Mr. Jones, we, we'll be, thank you, sir. Be young, you three minutes. All right? Oh, you got somebody else, Mr. McCain?
Any other comments from our, our group? Okay.
I think we got three more. Three more? Who are you calling first, Mr. McCain?
I don't know these ladies' names, but-
Please state your first and last name.
God, I have a reputation.
Your three minutes start after that, okay?
Yeah, and I have a lot of points, and I'll have to omit a lot, because I'm going to try to stay in the three minutes. I'm Carolyn Breedlove. I live at 427 St. Maurice Lane. Can you not hear me? God. Okay, can you hear me now?
It's better.
And I've lived there incredibly, to me, for 32 years. And in that time, the ground of my property has subsided, and my next-door neighbors, who's only been there since Katrina, have noticed this same phenomenon. Did you know New Orleans used to be above sea level? But they drained those Cypress swamps, and they drained them, and they built them, and the, the ground subsided. So I want to talk about fundamentals. I agree with the traffic and the drainage and, and all of those issues, but fundamentally, this is the back swamp of Old Red River. And you can look at those overlay maps, the colonial maps, and you can see that there's, except for that berm, that natural berm along Red River, where the houses are above, you know, the, the swamp, that we're all living in the swamp, what used to be swamp. So I also remember, incidentally, that there's an ordinance that requires that any new development not alter the existing character of- not alter the existing character of a neighborhood. Well, this, clearly, I don't even have to point it out, do I? This would drastically alter the existing character of this neighborhood that has been there for a long time. Basically, I'm talking about the land, the character of the land, the landscape, and what it can tolerate. And that area is pretty much at its upper limit for development. It can sustain agriculture. That's low impact, and it drains the water. It has been able to sustain recreational uses because that's low impact. And I'm not saying that you can't build another random house or two there. That won't have an impact. But any high-density, intensive development like this one is going to be would be a disaster. We all saw those people waiting out of their neighborhoods in Houston after Harvey, up to their armpits in water. You know that some developer told them, yeah, it's low-lying, but we've taken care of that. We fixed that, and it's going to be okay. Those people in Baton Rouge and around Baton Rouge with water up to their eaves, you know that developers promised them that, yeah, 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 we know it's low-lying, but we've fixed that. We've dealt with that. No.
You have about 10 more seconds, Ms. McCain.
As Mr. McCain said, you know, water stands there. Or maybe it was Terry. I've lost track. Okay, this is Natchitoches. The first fort, as we all know, was built on an island in Red River. In a few years, they had to abandon that settlement and build a new fort and a new settlement. And where did they build it? Well, the most significant remaining vestige of that is known as the American Cemetery. They built on high ground.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Breedlove. I think, I think Mr. McCain.
Do we have any people here flying?
I think, Ms. McCain, two more.
One other lady that would like to comment?
We've had a lot.
Please come forward.
I think you've got two more, right, Mr. McCain, who've identified themselves? Please state your first and last name, and we got you on there for three minutes, Scott.
Becky Kiefer, 508 Elizabeth Street. By profession, I'm a doctor. My patients usually have four legs. I have one question for Mr. Strange, and then I have a comment. I've heard quite frequently this evening and through the planning commission meeting that sewage is a problem. Yes, this is true. There are open sewage ditches in all of our subdivisions around this area. When it rains, the water goes there. We're talking about a 36-lot subdivision with detention ponds. That water has to go somewhere. It goes into the water table. We're talking about, we all know what COVID has done. We know how things spread. We're talking about contaminated water. We're talking about sewage. We're talking about problems that can occur in the backyard of these schools and athletic events going on at St. Mary's and Weaver and all these, and children being exposed to contaminated table water. Has anyone considered this? My question for Mr. Strange is, tonight, he said initially his corporation would take care of the maintenance. What does initially mean? Is that a week, a year, a month, and following that, who's responsible? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCain is, he's the last one, I think? Is he?
I think so.
Okay. Hey, sir, state your first and last name, and your three minutes.
My name is Sam Nelken. When I was a little kid, they called me Sammy Nelken, and I lived at 916 Nettie Street. And I would walk to M.R. Weaver or ride my bicycle every day down St. Maurice Lane. Then I went to East Natchitoches Junior High. I'm old now, and I see all my old friends in here. Sorry. And nothing has been done to St. Maurice Lane in my lifetime. Not a single improvement, not one. We used to have a red light. Now we have a four-way stop. My question, or a couple of questions, are, Mr. Strange said that this land is zoned R1. I don't know if it's zoned R1 or not because the cotton, our soybeans, have been grown on this land my whole lifetime. So I don't know what it is zoned. So my question to the city council and to whoever is what property tax will this project develop? What economic development will impact our city? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council, we rest our case.
I think, oh, just the last one?
I'm sorry, Ron.
All right, I think we've got two more, okay? Then we're going to close it there. Because I want to give the council an opportunity to say what they've got to say, and have Mr. Strange back up to answer some questions.
I will talk really quickly. I am Rhonda Guidros, and I am the school board representative for District One, which houses Weaver, East, and St. Mary's. St. Maurice runs down through by that, by all three, by one school, Weaver, and that intersects with East Fifth. Those are main thoroughfares for the traffic for these schools, which is enormous when you consider the possibilities. For Weaver in particular, the main office is facing St. Maurice Lane. Car traffic has to go down St. Maurice or East Fifth down between the schools. The car pickup lines up behind the baseball fields and all the way through that area where the subdivision is proposed. Those cars exit twice a day on St. Maurice Lane. There are children walking in the area. There's a high volume of pedestrian traffic from all the other outlying areas to those schools, plus the bus traffic, which goes through the front on East Fifth. The compounded volume of traffic from a proposed subdivision like this is enormous. There's no way to, two ways about it. And those children, most of them, will have to walk to school. We had someone say, well, we'll just send a bus in to pick them up. We can't send buses in. That's within a one-mile radius of the schools. So there will have to be either pedestrian traffic or car traffic to get those kids to school. Also, that area, when you build up, just common sense, if you build up an area directly behind an already low-lying area, there's no amount of pond drainage that you can get. There's going to be runoff. Those fields that are typically soccer fields behind there hold water all the time. You can go out there for a soccer game. We've been unable to cut grass for extended periods of time in those fields directly behind the schools where the children play because it's underwater. It doesn't matter when you go out there. There's going to be water standing, and the runoff from a proposed housing project of this magnitude is going to go somewhere, and it's going to go to a low-lying area when you build up for that number of houses. There's no two ways around it. The safety of our children is of utmost importance.
About 30 seconds, Ms. McCain.
You got it. You got it. There is no way we can safely get those kids to and from school. We are charged as a school board with educating the children and keeping them safe during the day. We have dealt with COVID. We have dealt with flooding. Don't compound that problem by putting a subdivision where it has no business be.
All right. And I think you got right here, Mr. Jack McCain is the last one who's identified himself right here. Come on, sir. Come on.
Ralph?
Yes, sir. State your first and last name, sir, and your three minutes, three minutes to start after you say your last name.
My name is Ralph Ingram, and I will keep this short. In the 1950s, the drainage system for East Natchitoches was designed and built. That was over 70 years ago. And when it was designed and built, it was built for agricultural purposes only, not block after block of concrete, which cannot run in the ground. It has to drain off. Now, this council has turned down a number of subdivisions because of poor drainage. This subdivision also needs to be turned down because of poor drainage, and all of us here know that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you for all of those. I think that's who.
Mayor, have we overlooked anyone?
No, I think we got everybody, Mr. McCain. Look, and I tell you what we'll do as well. Can we do this, Mr. McCain? And we, we'll do this so that everybody could say they had a voice even if they didn't speak. All of those, basically, in support of the previous six or seven speakers, for whatever reason, if you would just raise your hand and let us know if you're in support of what was just stated from the previous six or seven speakers. Okay? I mean, and not Mr. Strange. I'm talking about starting with Ms. McCain on. Okay. All right. And I also need to ask anybody here in support of, school and the council, of course, at this moment, in support of Mr. Strange's, the rural development. Anybody in support of? Okay. We do have a, we have a gentleman in the back. Okay. Okay, yeah, 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 we certainly do. We want to allow Mr., well, he's, he'll say his name, first and last name, and he's coming. And then after he speaks, I want council, I want to start from my left and work my way down to allow them to speak. And still, Mr. Strange, any questions that you might get, you can address those when you speak again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
First and last name, please, sir.
Larry Turner.
Okay.
Larry Turner of Alexandria, Louisiana.
Three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Larry Turner, Alexandria, Louisiana. Not here to try to tell you what to do with your city, not here to try to disrupt your city in any way. I simply wanted, came up here to say this. We had the exact same meeting in Alexandria. You probably have saw it in the news a few times, exact same. Mr. Strange has built, has built three different developments in our city, has done well. No problem with them at all. The drainage is no problem. It did not, neither one of those projects, developments, has brought down the property value where it is. After the developments was built, the residents in that area is, they're just, they are overjoyed because it actually didn't do what they thought it was going to do. So, and everybody is getting along. I think that it would be a good thing. It was, it's a good thing for us, and these developments are well-maintained, they are well-managed. The, it just, it just did a lot of good in our city. I just wanted to say that, and it would help a lot. I just wanted to come to say that. Thank you, brother mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, citizens. Three locations, two in Alexandria, one in Pineville. One, Carlyle Place is, I guess you would call it the Woodside area.
Is that by the interstate?
Yes, sir. Right there by the interstate. Then there is another one over in Pineville, and then there is another one on, off of Third Street.
Hey, hey, let me say, any questions, let us address them in the mic, okay? Any questions? All right. Are you finished, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, since I didn't use my whole five minutes, I've got one closing remark.
I think you have one minute left, Mr. McCain. All right.
You know, the financial arm of this development is Berkshire Hathaway. And of course, Berkshire Hathaway is owned by Warren Buffett, who is probably one of the richest people in the United States. I think Mr. Strange has 1% of the development, as I understand it. I wonder when these units begin to deteriorate. I know Mr. Buffett's not going to come and see about it, but is Mr. Strange going to see about it? Good question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. All right. All right. Well, I'll tell you what, either way, we could go, how about this, Mr. Strange? You come back at this time, and we'll get you to, you know, stay a little bit, I guess. The council is going to then come after you. We'll do it that way, and get you to hang back just in case there are any questions that the council may have for you. So I know you're going to address some questions that were directed towards you.
Yes, sir. I will, I've tried to make notes best I could, so I'll just, I'll read this from my notes.
Rebuttal.
I'm sorry?
I just said rebuttal. Go ahead.
No, she just made, yeah.
Okay. So there was a comment that, in all the time that, the gentleman that was speaking was aware that the planning commission, when they had voted on something unanimously, had never been reversed. I'm not aware of any of those previous circumstances, and, you know, I would like that this consideration limited to the circumstance tonight on whether or not in this one instance that they may have made an error in applying the legal standard. It was also mentioned that, to use legal words like arbitrary and capricious was somehow disingenuine, but the fact of the matter is, that is the legal standard upon which this decision must be considered tonight. One of the ladies that made a comment said that she had seven rental houses in the area, so that would suggest that there is both rental and home ownership in that area already, and we're not doing anything to change the character of what's in the neighborhood. There was a comment said that, you know, I can't rent a house for $850. How can he? Well, that's because of the tax credits, that we sold this investment in the partnership to Berkshire Hathaway, who gets a tax write-off. Berkshire, in fact, Berkshire Hathaway is going to get about a $10 million tax write-off. So because of that tax write-off, we're able to offer these houses at a discounted rent to what an average citizen could do. Our subdivision has curb and gutters and does comply. There was a comment that we have gone back and forth on whether or not this was rental, whether or not it was home ownership, and as I have tried to be transparent with, in each one of these hearings, we have, it has changed. The original application that we made to Louisiana Housing was for a 15-year rental, then home ownership. With increased cost in construction, the amount of tax credits that we were given by the state were insufficient to move this development forward. So we went back to the state and asked for additional resources. It was at that time, they requested of us that if we give you the additional resources to cover the construction cost overruns, would you agree to a extended use period? I mean, longer rental with no home ownership. That's a benefit to the state, not to us, not necessarily this community. We agreed. Then when we came back to yet another meeting with concerned citizens, and it was conveyed to us that the citizens were strongly in favor of home ownership, we went back to the state again and said, for the last time, that we would like this to go back to a 15-year rental and then 15 years on a mortgage. Okay? And so that is what is going to be. That is our final word from the state as we move forward. I can't hear you.
Please, folks, let's, we've been doing great tonight. Let's allow him to answer the questions that were asked, please.
There were comments made relative to income levels and AMI and things like that. I think that questions like that violate fair housing laws. I'm happy to answer most of any questions that this board or the audience would have, but I'm not going to answer that question. I will say that the median income for that census tract is, in fact, $69,000. We spent $10,000 on a geotechnical engineering report to go and do core borings of the soils out there. We have extensive engineering on the type of soil out there, how the post-tension slabs will be designed. In fact, we've spent now upwards of $250,000 on this development already because with engineers, architects, geotechnical reports, legal fees, accounting fees, it really adds up. We have option monies to the landowner that are quite significant at this time. We had paid for our tax credits that we've been reserved. That is a significant reservation fee paid to the state. We will, during the first 15 years, maintain everything. We pay for everything. We maintain everything, and I assure you that if Berkshire Hathaway's name is associated with that development, the grass will be cut, the homes will be maintained. After 15 years, it would be the homeowner's responsibility to maintain those homes. After 15 years, it would be the homeowner's responsibility to maintain those homes, just like it is yours and my responsibility to maintain our own homes. Uh, about what would be the economic impact of this development? It's a $10 million development. That's a signir- sig- excuse me, significant economic impact in the form of sales tax, in the form of property tax on a go-forward basis, in, 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 in so far as employment opportunities. Because a $10 million project, it's about $7 million in construction hard costs. Those products will be bought here locally. That's a big boom to the, to the local economy.
Folks, I, I really don't want to ask, uh, law enforcement to escort somebody out, but I'll, I'll do it. I assume Mr. Strange is still answering some questions.
Yes. Well, and, and, and whether you believe me or not, it, it's just economic sense that it's certainly cheaper for us to buy lumber within the city than drive it across three state lines a- a- and pay trucking costs. So whenever we go to a city, we make a, a significant economic impact. Uh, another thing is, back to the drainage again, and that there's, there's always this trying to equate density to drainage. If that were the case, we'd have no major metropolitan cities. This development has been engineered to make sure that it is not discharging any additional volume of water or velocity of water than already exists on that site as an agricultural field. Those calculations have been reviewed by your city engineer, who concurs with the calculations. It will not cause drainage problems as an engineering matter. I think that's most of the ones that I wrote down. I'm happy to entertain any others.
Well, how about we allow, I want to allow city council an opportunity at this point. There may be some questions as well. I know you had your hand up in the back, but, uh, city council, let, let me say this. A city council, that may be, your question may be covered, I don't know. Uh, so Councilman PT, can we start with you? Does anything you've got, any remarks or any questions? I want to allow you to do that.
Yes, sir. I would like you to define, uh, the on-site maintenance. You men- mentioned that. What is, what all does that include? Consists of?
Uh, everything. And so there's really two ways to look at that. There will be an independent company, uh, that is hired to maintain the lawns. That's just too much for a, a, one individual or a small crew of people to do. So like the local Walmart, or whomever has crews that come and tend to the, the, the lawn maintenance, grass cutting and all that stuff, we will have a contract. We will also have a full-time employee that's a maintenance man. And the maintenance man is there to service any maintenance request. If your dishwasher is not working, if the garbage disposal is not working, if, uh, your door hinges loose, any number of manner of things. You just put in a work request order and it gets processed. And so for the first 15 years, even the most minor detail as far as home maintenance will be provided for the tenant at the cost of the owner.
And also, somebody mentioned that, uh, concerning like the open road ditch in the front right there of that property, uh, with your construction, is there anything that you're doing to close that ditch or?
N- no, sir, not along St. Maurice. O- only where our road would enter off of St. Maurice, uh, th- there will be culverts and, and engineering things done to get, with on our street, and then it becomes curb and gutter.
So you're just only providing the entrance way, but you're not, you're not doing anything with that ditch? You're gonna leave it open?
N- no, not, not on, on our entrance road.
Okay, what, what is the entrance road? Where is it located?
Uh, so there's just a single entrance street to the subdivision off of St. Maurice, um, that on this, I had the site plan, um, pulled up. Maybe he can get to the site. If you have another question, I'll-
Yeah, it was a picture, I think.
Right there.
It's good enough.
There'll be a single street that comes off of St. Maurice. Once we cross over St. Maurice into the property, everything becomes underground, subsurface, curb and gutter, drainage. Everything is, is piped and contained with, within the development itself. Uh, it discharges on the outflow into the detention, and then it discharges from the detention into the, the parish ditch. Uh, I guess that would be to the north. Uh, so along St. Maurice, we would just cross over the existing open ditch that's there and put in concrete reinforcement. It's almost like a bridge over the ditch, so to speak. The upper right-hand corner, the two lots. Yes, sir. Yes, the, 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 the whole development is fenced. And then at the front entrance, there's a gate. And the gate operates by the, you know, like the weight of the car when you pull up, and, and, and the gate opens.
Okay. Councilman PT, you good?
For now.
All right. Okay, Councilman Harrington, and here's what I say, I forgot to say this at the beginning. I'm not necessarily timing the council, but I'll let you know when you got five minutes of your remarks. Go, go there, okay? Councilman Harrington, it's you, sir.
Explain as to why the street continues on. Is there plans for future development? It, it appears it's, it's obvious it plans the road and continues to a future.
Uh, yes, sir. That question came up in the planning commission. And we have no plans for any future development. Uh, but the city subdivision ordinance does require a, a terminus road like that. And so it was designed to comply with the ordinance. But we have no plans to extend that road. Yes, sir.
What, um, you mentioned there's a full-time maintenance employee. Wh- where are they gonna reside?
Uh, somewhere in, in Akadish.
Oh, I see. So not on the property?
No, no, sir.
And things such as the, um, I believe I've, I've heard before there'll be a homeowner association to maintain like the detention pond and the community center. And I was curious how that's gonna work, if it's rental?
Yeah, right. Not during the first 15 years. It is 100% our responsibility to maintain all of that during the first 15 years. Uh, and there's a fund set up to do so on the front end.
So you mean Roanoke responsibility?
The, the partnership's responsibility, which would be ourselves and Berkshire Hathaway.
I guess my question to that is, um, the partnership with, with Hathaway, with-
They, they will hire us to manage the property on, on their behalf. And so we will have a, in addition to the maintenance personnel, there's a full-time onsite manager.
Okay. So do they, um, so there'll be a full-site on manager as well?
Yes, sir.
Full-time onsite manager?
Yes, sir.
As well as the maintenance?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I don't have questions.
And can I offer a point of clarification for that? The, the, that's, there, there's a, what is being called a community building? It's not a community building in the sense that it's open to the community. It is a private building on the front of the development, which is where the manager's office is. It's, it's a small, little 2,000-square-foot building. The manager's office is, is in there, and there's a, a, a large meeting room, much smaller than this, but not dissimilar to this. So that in the future, when there are homeowners' meetings and stuff like that, the homeowners would have a place to meet.
Good.
I don't have questions.
Okay. All righty. Um, Councilwoman Inlaugh Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first say, I know there is a great need for more homes here in Akadish, affordable homes. My main concern, I think we talked at length about this, it's some, we did talk about this, but my main concern was, after the 15 years, if they decide that they don't, that they no longer want to continue to rent, what happens to the money they've invested for 15 years? If they, can they sell it and get from the equity in there, what they've invested in?
So, there, each tenant is given credit for the 15 years of the rental period, so that when it converts in the 15th year, it's actually the 16th year, to a mortgage for the additional 15 years, uh, the, the, the amount of the mortgage is about $100, $105,000. So they've been given credit for the rental payments they've made during the first 15 years, because again, the house was $250,000 to begin with. And so, yes, the individual would end up with a substantial amount of equity after 15 years.
Okay. But if they don't, okay, so if they can, if they want to continue with this, that, that mortgage continues the same, that 850 continues, it, it doesn't go up or anything?
That's what the mortgage payment would be, based upon that amount of de- debt at a, at a current assumed interest rate. Obviously, we can't project with-
Well, right, right.
Into the future.
So would they not, after paying rent, when it turns over to a mortgage, they wouldn't have to go through another application to be granted the mortgage?
Yes.
Oh, they would?
Yes.
So if they're denied that, then it's just, the house is, what happens?
They could continue to rent the house, uh, until which time is there was, if there was some issue that maybe that they'd lost a job recently or something and they needed to-
I think that's what Ms. Betty was saying, that if they couldn't rent it anymore-
They can still rent.
No, I know, but if they, what would happen if it, they're no longer renting it? What happens to them after the 15 years?
If they choose to move out without occupying their right to purchase, then they would have just been paying rent like at, anywhere else. It's their choice.
Let me finish with what I was saying, please, Mr. Harrington. Um, so my next question is, they're renting, renting the house 15 years. What if, after something happens to them, what happens to that particular house? I mean, if they-
W- we would rent it to the, the next family, uh, that made an application.
You rent to the next family?
For the first 15 years. So for instance, to clarify that, i- if the first family, for whatever reason, relocated from Akadish after five years, okay? Then the second family would come in and they would only be renting for 10 years. The whole thing converts after the 15th year.
15. And how are these applicants chosen? Can you tell me that? Based on what?
Through, uh, an application process, where they come in and fill out applications. Uh, there, there's credit checks, uh, there, there are actually, uh, background checks. Uh, they have to have all the appropriate documentation with respect to income verification, um, and, and go through a process of, of being approved to be sure that they, they qualify and have enough money to be able to afford the rent and, and live in the development.
Thank you. I just, one last thing. You said over 60, over $69,000, they would not qualify. Is that correct? I think you said 69 or 65.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Nielsen?
Uh, we doing question or comments?
Yeah, yeah, really, it, it could have been either one here, but I think Councilman Harrington wants to wait on his. But yeah, you can give your, your comments and your questions at this point.
Well, uh, community center, and I guess this is a question from Ms. Rock. From what's being described, shouldn't that be a B designation?
For the community center?
Yeah.
It's still residential because on a residential use.
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry, Ms. Rock.
The community center's not being used for business. It's actually still part of the residential use. They're not gonna be doing any type of retail service, anything like that. The office will be there, yes. But just like any other apartment complex or anything else, it's still gonna be considered residential.
Okay, and then at what point did the gate get added to the project?
The gate was there in the beginning.
Okay. And I think you answered my other one. Uh, point of clarity, though. St. Maurice is grandfathered in, and it does not meet current city standards. Just, just want to throw that point out.
You good?
Yeah, on questions, I want to-
Okay, you want to save your comments for later? Councilwoman Washington, Eli?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two questions for you, and thank you all for coming up. I really do appreciate each and every one of you. I was wanting to do, you complying with all the ordinance? Did you meet with all the city department's heads to make sure that you follow all the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, now, I do want to be expeditious with our time. I saw there were a few from the audience. Please understand, we don't want to allow it to, to go. So I, I saw three people, and I want to let those three people ask, uh, real quickly. Um, and then, Mr. Strange, I know you'll be briefing to the point. Uh, I saw first gentleman here, gentleman in black shirt, Mr. Ingram. Gentleman at the back wall first, can you, yeah, well, we need to be able to hear you. So, yeah. We had the mic, the other one, but come on, yeah, it, it's-
You mentioned something about the property taxes, and you said something at the tail end of it. What was that again?
Uh, sales taxes.
No, sir. I want to know how much property taxes will be paid on this development?
I have not run the millage rate calculations for the parish, but it's a, it's a $10 million valued asset.
I know, when you mentioned property taxes a minute ago, you kind of had a little caveat at the end, like, property tax will be paid, but I don't remember the caveat. If anybody remembers?
I think all that he said was that, that we'll be paying property tax and that there will be a sales tax component to it as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, you, sir, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, black shirt. Come to the mic as well.
One thing I'd like to show y'all over here.
No.
Right here, where the road comes out, he says that there's no future development. I saw the same flats you saw, and there is future development drawed out on there.
So you're asking them, was there, well, yeah, what's your question?
He just got to saying there was no deal for future development, no planning. But on this paper y'all got there, with the platinum, it's dotted out all around there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Strange, you want to respond?
There is 100% no plans for future development. I think the confusion on that may have ca- come in, and Ms. Rock can, um, refresh my memory on this, that when the very original concept was brought to the city's attention of, way before we had any meetings or had a real survey or anything like that, there was a proof of concept that showed that there could be future development by anyone else who chooses to do that, uh, and that, that the land would not be landlocked by virtue of the way it was being developed. But we never had any plans to do so, and that was, uh, just simply a document that, that was provided for, for the city's reference.
Okay, and then there's one more thing from you, Mr. Ingram.
I think I can speak loud enough that you can all hear me.
Wait, hold on, should we get him?
Yeah.
Come on, we, 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 I know you speak loud, but yeah. Yeah. Everybody at home can't hear you too, and then like you say, for the rest-
Our current administration in Washington says and supports everybody paying their fair share of taxes. I believe Mr. Biden, this gentleman is, uh, supporting this thing. Mr. Buffett should pay his fair share of taxes, and I don't believe this city council should support his taxes- should support his tax dodge. Thank you.
That's not a question, Ms. Ingram? No, you just, no question, just come, okay. I thought you had a question. Okay. All right, Mr. Jones, this has to be the last one, okay? I'm sorry, y'all. We gotta, at, at one point, we gotta cut it off, you know, because we do have other items on the agenda.
When we met with you, you said there was going to be a minimum salary to be able to move into-
Can you speak in the mic, please, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Strange said there'd be a minimum salary before they would be eligible to enter his program. Tonight, he didn't mention that, so what has changed? You told us it would be $48,000 minimum salary. The next question is, are you going to accept housing assistance for people to live in that property? In other words, you're going to use vouchers?
I will answer both of those questions, but I would like to make an objection on the record as to being asked those questions as it violates fair housing laws.
You have wanted to prod it up.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir. A Section 8 voucher would not be able to pay the rent at that house and you have to have a minimum amount of income to be able to pay $850 in rent and pay all of your other bills and everything and we look at that during the application process.
Hey, Mr. Strange, I'm saying they can't hear you. Can you speak a little closer in the mic, sir?
Yes. The minimum income requirements come into play in a calculation based upon what your current income is and you take what the rental expenses, your utility bills, what anticipated expenses are relative to car payments or every other standard of living thing and you're going to have to have a minimum amount of income to be able to pay that kind of rent and not get yourself, in fact, the, there's a, there's a, a rule that you can't spend more than a third of, of your income on housing expenses. And so, then you add on top of that all of the other expenses and you're going to get to, give or take, $48,000. It is a, it's a calculation, it's a formula and it will change based on the AMI changes, not significantly, not, not by more, more than a few dollars here and there, but I want you to understand, it's not a concrete number because the area median income could go from 69,000 to 70. It could go from 69 to 68. So there will be a little bit of back and forth on that and it's an annual calculation.
Thank you, Mr. Strange. Look, what I want to do is-
I have a quick question.
Well, can I, can I say, let me say this. I do want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't allow a planning and zoning director to say, I know she's been asked a couple of questions, but I, all the council received this, just for clarity, for the motion, it hadn't been a motion yet, but just for clarity, a move to reverse the decision, if somebody makes that motion, a move to reverse the decision of the planning and zoning commission and a yes vote would agree to reverse and approve the application, alright? But on the other end, there's another motion that we're possibly dealing with. A move to uphold the decision of the planning and zoning commission and it just simply says a yes vote would be to agree with the planning and zoning commission and the application to be denied. So just so we're clear, Ms. Cheryl Rock, you, and we'll allow council to make their final comments, I think some of them have them, and then there should be a motion and a vote, because I think we've, we've heard a lot. Go ahead, Ms. Rock. Yeah, just if there's any, you might not have any comments, but-
Is there nothing further for me, ma'am?
No, I think you're good.
I don't have any additional comments, just to state that we, by the planning and zoning department, we have taken, looked at the application, we've compared what he submitted to our ordinances for the city. And as a city department, it is our responsibility to look at what's presented and make a judgment based upon the ordinances that we are here to govern by. And according to what, what's been presented, he's in compliance with everything that the city requires for the subdivision, regulations and ordinances. And that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, alright. Yeah, this got to be the last one, then I want, gotta get council to make their comments and make a motion.
This, this subdivision is going to have a direct impact on all three schools in that area. A dynamic impact. I want to know, the school board depends on property taxes for our building and maintenance and equipment funds. Who pays the property tax on that? This is going to, we're going to have increased numbers? We don't have the funds. We get a per pupil, but that is not, that does not cover what the, any, any kind of building, building and maintenance. The safety issue is foremost concern and should be for every, every member of this community. Our children are at risk by this development.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, alright. So council, we've heard, and we've heard from Mr. Strange. He's asked, he's answered questions. We've heard from residents who've had questions and, and comments in opposition of the subdivision. The ball is now in your court, so either somebody wants to move on something or make your comments first, it's, it's on you, council, so.
I just have a quick question, ma'am, and it's not basically a question, it is just a statement. I have heard so many complaints, so many, and it's very negative, very negative. It's containing drainage? No, it's containing about who's going to be in the subdivision. It's going to be people in the subdivision. And we're complaining about where the kids going to travel to. I drive a school bus. It has kids walking up and down the street with no one attending to them. We go from Scarborough Street, where kids cross the street from there going to Weaver and East, St. Mary's. So it's not about the subdivision, it's about the people. So we all need to sit up here and think about it. We have a lady that said that she has seven rent houses and complaining about the rent. I have researched that the rent that's on Elizabeth Road, Stephanie Road, St. Maurice Road, it's a total of $800 to $1,000. So with this subdivision is coming up, it's going to give these opportunity for people to save money, to be able to put food in their kid's mouth, clothing on their back. So we need to all sit there and think about this. We're coming here with nonsense, and I hate to say this, nonsense about drainage. We came up to a meeting with this board, with the parish boards. He's going to fix the drainage. It's a certain part of, I don't know how much money it was, we're all here. But this is nonsense. We all need to come together as one and actually really think about this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, ma'am.
City attorney, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, someone made a comment that the Planning and Zoning Commission had never been overturned before, but the city council has overturned the MP's, the Planning and Zoning decision recently on the Raddick-Johnson case that we were sued, so they have been overturned. So what I'm saying is, when the council is making this decision, the constitution allows for the council to make a decision even independent of the planning and zoning. And by, by case law, I'm sure you read it in the King's case, so the, the council can make a decision based on whether or not this group complied with the ordinances that we had in place. And from talking to the directors and all department heads, in the record appears that they complied with it. So this decision is with the council and you can make this decision independent of what the zoning and planning commission did.
And he's specifically speaking of when that was, I think it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and denied by the city council.
I understood what you're saying. I said, never overturn a unanimous decision from the planning commission.
Yeah, unanimous.
And that's actually, you're saying it's not?
No, I'm, I'm, well, I said what I said, which I said that the city council did recently overturn the planning and zoning commission. That's what I said.
Okay, alright. We're, we're back in the hands of the council here, so whoever it is, make comments or motion. Whoever want to go?
I just want to say, I somewhat agree with Councilwoman Eli. All we've talked about tonight has been drainage, drainage, drainage. And we have to admit, all over the city of Natchitoches, we have drainage problems all over. My, my main concern really has been about the people being able to afford the $850 amount of rent. I would love to see them be able to own their own home. Some of my questions tonight that I had have been answered clearly, more clearly tonight. But we need to, we say, someone says something hasn't been changed in 50 years. Natchitoches is always talking about growth and growing. How can we grow if we don't want, we don't accept changes? Sometimes you have to accept changes in order to grow. And we want to attract people to Natchitoches. If they have nowhere to live, they're not going to come to Natchitoches. And that's all I have to say.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir. Councilman PT?
Mr. Strange, I apologize for this, but I do have a question. It's very important.
Since he's a councilman, we're allowed to come on up, Mr. Strange, one more time.
So you mentioned after that 15-year period that they could move toward home ownership. In that process, if they were to have a hardship after those 15 years, you telling me they're going to be out on the street after they invested so much money? I need understanding of that.
No, sir. If, in year 15, if for any reason, one of the residents that live there did not want to exercise their right of home ownership, they could continue in, as a rental property.
Well, no, I'm saying they, they want to become a homeowner, but at that, that time, that 15 to 16-year period, if they have a hardship or anything like that, they didn't invest that money for 15 years. I'm saying, are they going to be put on the street?
No, sir.
I guess it's just like paying rent. If you don't pay your rent, you're out, right?
So what, what, what is in place to protect that person that invested 15 years of their hard-earned money? That's, that's what I need to, need answered.
You're saying if they can't pay their rent anymore?
If they can't pay their rent, if they have a hardship, they invested 15 years.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think that with any property, that you're going to have to pay the rent to be able to stay there. I would assume that, that we would work with individuals for, you know, that, for instance, right now, it's, it's the perfect example. Everybody was going through hardships because of COVID and stuff and so there, there were evictions in place on moratoriums and landlords work with tenants and so in that case, we would want the, the tenant to be able to transition into their home ownership and help them do everything they, they could, they, to, to do so. But at some point in time, there could possibly come a situation where an individual that was no longer able to make their financial obligations, we would then make that house available to another family.
So they'd lose whatever credits they've paid in, whatever-
Yes, ultimately, yes.
And I guess very quickly, because I know Councilman Harrington needs to say something, Councilman Nielsen is going to make some final comments and then we'll hear a motion. I, I guess just for me, what assurances that the models you've shown, you, you would stick to that, those models? Because, because the models don't look bad, but, so what assurances do we have?
So, it's just as contained in our tax credit application, which is on record with the state of Louisiana, where we have committed to everything, the, the, down to the, the square footage of the houses, the floor plans of the houses, the, the amenities, the, the gate, the fencing. We're committed 100% to that obligation or you face recapture of tax credits, which means that Berkshire Hathaway would lose the tax benefit that they paid good money for. There is no way they would let that happen. So they audit this all the time to make sure everything is exactly as contained in that application.
So in this system, you're saying it's legally, that's the legal binding party?
Absolutely.
Alright. Councilman Harrington?
Yeah, please, I don't have any more questions, just comments. And please bear with me as I'm kind of getting into the nitty-gritty of this all. And it's been stated that the developer meets all the qualifications of our ordinances. However, that's simply not the case. I agree the developer meets certain standards such as width of the road, he meets lot size, et cetera, but he does not meet the standards listed in Section 5 of our subdivision ordinances. It's kind of, someone said earlier, if a developer only had to meet certain things that could be easily quantified, like a lot size, road width, then there is no need for a vote, there's no need to have a meeting. However, we are granted a legislative discretion as a city council. Planning and zoning also used their discretion and ultimately voted, as we know unanimously know. One way that discretion is granted to us is through Section 5 of our subdivision ordinances. Some, some say the developer met the, the plat requirements with planning and zoning and, and that's all should have, that should have been done. However, Section 5, which is entitled "The Character of Development", states, and I quote, "The subdivider shall confer with the planning commission regarding the type and character of the development, not just its plat requirements." At planning and zoning, the developer presented his plans, showed pictures, which we were shown tonight, which we, and stated at the planning and zoning in meeting, which I've seen the minutes, stated that they'll be for sale for $225,000 at the very beginning of the meeting, which is inaccurate. When questioned later at the same meeting about how they were sold, whether there would be rentals, it started to get more specifics, those answers couldn't be, those questions couldn't be answered at the meeting, for whatever reason. The truth of the matter is, we know these properties are rentals. At the time of the planning and zoning meeting, well, I don't know when, they've changed so many times. I think it was 45 years at that time, it's 15 years now. Planning and zoning 100% did the right thing based on our ordinances by unanimously voting no. Not only, only did the developer not adhere to Section 5 by not conferring with the commission regarding the type and character. In fact, information was ultimately withheld and I believe false information was given at the meeting. And as a representative of the city of Natchitoches and a former member of planning and zoning, I personally resent that.
That's not true.
Section 5 of the ordinances also state that the development cannot depreciate the character of surrounding properties. And so it all comes down to what is the character of a property? It's not the zoning classification, because our ordinances specifically list, throughout our ordinances, it specifically discusses and lists zoning classifications. In this specific chapter, Chapter 5, it doesn't use that terminology. It uses a different word. It's not used anywhere, anywhere else in our ordinances, it uses "character". This is for legislative, our council's discretion and determination to define what a character is. Regarding the character of surrounding properties, none of them are part of a rental subdivision. None of them have a management company over them. Also, who better to define the character of surrounding properties than the homeowners themselves, who are 100% adamantly against it? In fact, we've received, what is it, 1,100 complaints, as far as I know. As Mr. Strange stated earlier, this has changed over and over, 15 years, 45 years. Stated it was for sale at one point, back to 15 years. That concerns me. That it's, it continues to change. If we approve this, we have no control over that change anymore. We approve him moving forward with the subdivision and that's it. So it can continue to change. I'm just, that concerns me. I'm for developing the city. In fact, a lot of you are probably not going to like to hear me say this, but if an area, if something comes in the area that fits the character and type, it could be developed. And so, the only way to ensure something's not ever developed is to own the property yourself. But this one, however, does not fit the character and type, in my opinion. And I move to uphold the decision of planning and zoning commission.
Can I rebuttal him on that? For one, the city does not regulate rental properties or for sale properties. When it comes to character of development, we look at, will that property depreciate what's around it? That's what we look at for the planning and zoning purposes. We don't regulate rentals or the type of homes that's going to be there. So you can't say that planning and zoning did look at character development. I would say that's incorrect.
Well, it, it says that he must confer with them the type and character of development.
And he did that.
And it said that, it must not depreciate the value or the character of surrounding- And it said that, um, it must not depreciate the value or the character of surrounding properties, not just the value.
Correct. And it's not doing neither, it's not depreciating.
That's a, that's something, a difference of opinion.
Okay, well, a difference of opinion, but don't say that the planning commission did not confer over character of development.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying that was part of, it wasn't just the plat they're supposed to vote on, it's also the character and type of development.
And that's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, we agree on that.
You were in the middle of a motion, councilman.
Yeah, I made a motion to uphold the decision of planning and zoning commission.
Second.
All right, Councilman Nielsen, I think you have some comments too.
Yeah, just real short, I've been doing this a long time, in fact, long enough to have been on planning and zoning when the Walker's application came through. So this is nothing new, uh, it's east Natchez, no doubt. That's where people want to build, but the city has failed to prepare for that in a couple of different areas. The drainage system is finally, hopefully, going to be addressed. Uh, and my thoughts are, you don't build anything this substantial until you correct the drainage. And I think we have been perfectly consistent every time the applications come up. These people have been, uh, had several projects that could adversely affect them, and look, drainage, like it or not, it's a scary thing. And when you have water this far from your front door, that's a scary thing. So in my experience, east Natchez needs to be planned out, and it, and the city needs to do what it needs to do to, if you want to bring the development in, that we're going to have to spend some money and get the drainage corrected. Uh, the other thing, St. Maurice Lane, as I stated, that street was grandfathered in, and it is substandard. The cop, to do these kind of projects, because once you open the gate, you're going to have two or three other plot, plats of land that are going to come up that want to enter onto St. Maurice Lane. There is no curb and gutter, it's open ditch, on trash day, it is ridiculous trying to go down there, especially when the school bus is running. Uh, you know, it's just substandard. And we've been, again, we've been consistent with other applications, not because we didn't want the, the growth, but because of the potential drainage issues. Uh, and this, the street, for sure. Uh, I think the planning and zoning commission heard both sides of it and made a great decision. In fact, it's unanimous, and that doesn't happen all the time. And for us to go against that, in my tenure, we have always, when a neighborhood, whether it's in east or west, gets disengaged and, and really is against a project, we have always backed our constituents. And I think our constituents need to know that they can depend on us to protect them and their biggest investment, their home. So I'm, I'm opposed.
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilman Harrington, seconded by Councilman Nielsen. Um, and just for clarity, because these things can get in the negative and all of that, the, the motion that was made by Councilman Harrington was to uphold the decision of the planning and zoning commission, which means voting yes, you would agree with the planning and zoning commission, and the application would be denied. Okay?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we tabled this for further, now we have a motion, can, can we withdraw this motion?
I don't think we can, we not, can we?
We can substitute motion.
I think she was trying to make a substitute motion.
A substitute motion.
Well, I'm, so you, you, I'm, just to be clear, you're designed to put it off a little bit?
Yeah, I, the only reason I'm asking if we would, I would like to really look at, um, some development they've done and discuss it a little bit further. My, my main thing is, my main concern is really, when I was first approached with this, it was about homeownership. And as Mr. Harrington said earlier, it was, it's gone back and forth from home ownership to rental and back and forth. And I just want to get a clearer understanding of what it's going to be, really. That's all I would like, if we want to just maybe five more minutes tonight and go into, uh, executive session, we can do that.
He did, he stated earlier, it's fifteen years rental now, and then after the fifteen years, you have the option to purchase a home.
You did say that. I want assurance of what it's going to be. And as the mayor stated earlier, we saw the plat of, of different homes, and I like it, but are we assured that this, this is what these homes are going to look like?
Uh, Mr. Alex Washington, um, so we, we have a motion standing, which is to uphold the planning and zoning decision. We have the councilwoman at large is saying about, uh, I think she mentioned executive session or something like that, so please, please give us some guidance.
Yeah, we won't be able to go to any executive session on it. And, you know, the motion is made, it's on the floor.
It has to be a employee thing or something?
Yeah, it's a normal reason, plus we have to give notice to the public.
Yeah. And I think if, have me, this had to come up within forty-five days, right?
Forty-five.
And now, again, I'm no legal person, just kind of thinking of what she, what Councilwoman at large said, we, we're somewhere like day twenty, I don't know, where are we? Because it happened on the tenth?
Yeah.
Or?
Let me get out one of those, please.
So that may not, I don't know if that matters or not, just.
Mayor, I call for the vote.
It's, it's a motion.
Well, he's seconded.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
All right, so none of that even matters, okay? So, hey, roll call vote. So again, a decision, it's, it's to uphold the decision, yes vote would be uphold the decision and deny the application. Yep.
Eli?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
P T?
No.
All right, that means that the motion carries, the planning and zoning decision has been upheld. Okay, y'all going to stay with us?
Taking recess.
I know, I can't, we have to, okay. What we have to say for it? We just can do it?
Just say we're going to take a five minute recess.
Hey, we're going to take a brief recess, y'all.
Uh-uh.
To let them clear out.
Yeah, no, because it's going to be.
You're already went to arrest. You need to ask her.
Three minute recess, three minute recess.
I think I'd miss you a thousand times.
Thank you. Yeah, we're just taking a recess.
We got a few more minutes. How are you going to come back?
So the engineer is there?
Thank you very much. So let's say.
All right.
Companies that try to be the future. Y'all just have to keep it.
That's not a bad thing.
But it matters. But you have to, but you, but you still have to.
Taking a break. They took a break.
But it was, but this was.
But that was all of a sudden.
It was like something like the development over there.
It's all in the, it's all in the town.
Well, you, I don't, I don't like to hear people talk about other areas, that's not my, that's not what I'm talking about.
No, he wanted to, he, he, oh, no.
Oh, you're just, yeah, she was singing.
No, she said, who you in here with?
No, it was not.
Who was?
The golf country.
Oh, yeah.
But there was all the same, they still, they, 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 they
were there.
But this video, all of them, that was all happening.
They still want to be.
They're unfair.
They are unfair.
Well, I know it's a city, it's totally unfair.
They need to put a moratorium on all of this, city in Natchez, so I put this on the commission to make this decision.
You own, you, you own that, they don't.
Nobody done anything, they can only, they all can go.
But at the same time, somebody wants to develop something, then they're only going
to pay.
If they don't sit down, this commission goes off the town.
Nobody has made a move to fix anything.
I don't have, I think.
See, we got Councilman P T, Councilwoman Washington, Eli, West Councilman Nielsen. Okay. We're at the end of our three minute recess to allow the room to clear out. And Councilman Nielsen, can we, can we just, we can just go?
Councilman Nielsen, we can go without Nielsen.
Hey, we're going to go ahead and, I see Ms. Rock. We're, we're back in, uh, back in business of the city right now, um, and we're going to, I don't think these are, definitely not going to take the two, two hours. Um, but there is item number forty-seven, which is introduction, and that's on Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Number forty-four, skip all names.
Well.
Where, where are we?
We're on number eight.
Number eight.
Number eight, which is, uh, ordinance number forty-seven.
Forty-seven amendment of ordinance.
We got an ordinance up.
Yeah. It's, uh.
It's planning and zoning introduction.
It's a planning and zoning.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Washington, Eli is on you.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning and zoning introduction, zero four seven, ordinance amendment and ordinance number sixty-four of two thousand and one, by changing the zoning classification of property described as falling, follows, follows lot seven, block A of Keegan subdivision, two two three Scarborough Avenue. And it is for introduction only.
Okay, it is for introduction. Ms. Rock, could you inform us about this?
All right, so this is with Mr. Porche, he is actually doing a body collision shop. So what we previously were going to do was ask that the property be rezoned to B three, but in light of what B three would accomplish or uphold as far as the hours of operation, the planning commission suggested that we keep it B two with a special exception to operate the collision shop in a B two instead of a B three. So with a B two, his hours of operation would only be from seven to seven, which he was perfectly fine with. So we just granted him a B two with a special exception, that if the collision shop ceased to exist, that it would just stay a, a B two instead of taking it to the next level of B three, which allowed operations unlimited hours. So he, Mr. Porche was good with the B two with a special exception.
Okay. Council, y'all got any questions? It's not up for vote now, but any questions or comments?
No. And it's at Scarborough Avenue, this, this, yes, new building, a new.
Two twenty-three Scarborough, it's where the, was it home?
Home hardware.
Hardware, in the back?
On the back, okay.
Behind Little Caesar's.
In the back.
It, um, I've received a couple of questions from, uh, um, a couple of individuals in my district, and I, I didn't know, I didn't know the answer to it, so perhaps Mr. Porche can answer, regarding the, the paint and the paint, if you have some kind of vents, special vents for it, they'll contain it and not release it into the air. It's a couple of homeowners who live adjacent to the property, so if you could just clarify that.
James Porche, oh yeah, everything's filtrated through filters.
So you have a certain filter system?
Yep, inside the paint booth.
I'm sorry?
Inside my paint booth.
Okay.
Yeah, it's filtrated, the air is filtrated in, keeps it clean, it comes out filtrated through carbon filters and paper filters.
Perfect. I'll know how to answer him now, thank you.
Okay, if, if, everybody else, before he goes back, we're good, council? Any public comments or questions for Mr. Porche? The Porche, right?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Okey dokey, seeing none, again, this will appear on our meeting on the twenty-seventh. Okay, thank you, Mr. Porche, for being here. I know you waited a while. Yeah, okay. All right, moving on to, um, ordinances that are for introduction, and we got Councilwoman at Large, Smith, she's reading ordinance number forty-four.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number forty-four, twenty twenty-one, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchez to award the bid for a forklift telehandler for purchasing warehouse. Whereas resolution number forty-seven, I'm sorry, whereas resolution number fifty-seven of twenty twenty-one was passed by the Natchez City Council on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for a forklift telehandler for purchasing warehouse bid number zero six three eight. And whereas this bid was advertised in the Natchez Times on July twenty-ninth, August fifth, and August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, in accordance with law. And whereas four bid proposal were received and opened as follows. First bid being Scott Equipment out of Alexandria, one hundred and sixteen thousand, Ahearn Reynolds, one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, all-around access of Naples, Florida, Florida, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars, Octane Forklifts out of Denver, Colorado, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eighty-five dollars. Whereas on September second, twenty twenty-one, the appointed committee of Debbie Miley, Finance Director, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, Director of Utilities, and Rosemary Eli, Councilwoman, reviewed the bid proposals for the forklift telehandler for purchasing warehouse bid, zero six three eight. Whereas the above-appointed committee members unanimously recommend the city award the bid to the lowest bidder being Scott Equipment in an amount of hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. This ordinance was introduced on September thirteen, twenty twenty-one, and may I move for adoption this ordinance, number oh four four, twenty twenty-one?
It's, uh, it's an introduction, so.
It's introduction.
Yeah, yeah, so we're not going to adopt it at this point. Um, briefly, is that, who is this, Ed or, okay, go ahead, Ed, briefly.
Yeah, the forklift we have is, I'm not even sure the year model, but it's old, it's the early, uh, two thousands, and it's, it's not very, I say, reliable to take us into the future, that's the only forklift we have, we have a truck show up with transformers or things like that, and it breaks down, we're not going to be able to unload a truck. So what the plan is to have this forklift that gets worked hard every day, get the new one there, and we're going to pass along the old one to community development to use it there, nursery and other places over there. So it, it's much needed.
Okay, all right, any?
And it doesn't look like that one on the screen.
It doesn't?
It does not.
Okay.
It does not. I think that's just a stock forklift, but it's, it's, looks more like a construction site forklift that you can, that you see around.
Okay, all right. Um, any, any public comments or questions, council? I assume you don't have any at this point? Public comments or questions? All right, again, it'll be for vote on the next meeting on twenty-seventh. The next item on the agenda is for introduction as well, it's ordinance number forty-five, Councilman Harrington.
Ordinance number forty-five, twenty twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchez to award the bid for a forty-seven foot sheave height digger truck for the utility department. Um, there was only one bid proposal received, and it was Lone Star Truck Group from Shreveport, Louisiana, for two hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and two dollars. And on September second, twenty twenty-one, the appointed committee of Debbie Miley, Finance Director, Ed Lee, the Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, the Director of Utilities, and myself, reviewed the bid proposals for a forty-seven foot sheave height digger truck for the utility department. Um, and this is for introduction only. This is a vital piece of equipment. It's used to set poles. Uh, when we have broken poles, it sets transformers, um, digs holes for the, for the poles. It's, it's used every day. It's well-used.
Is this picture similar?
It, it's close, yeah. It's close.
We'll check, check with y'all before we put pictures up. Okay, uh, questions or comments, council?
I'm gonna have to go home and look up the definition of sheave. That's a new word.
I've heard it used in a different way, spelled a little differently, but no questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? All right, uh, again, that's up for vote the next time. Next one is ordinance number forty-six, uh, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchez to award the bid for pulse-closing transfer switches. Bid number zero-six-four-zero. Whereas resolution number fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-one was passed by the Natchez City Council on July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for pulse-closing transfer switches. Bid number zero-six-four-zero. Whereas this bid was advertised in the Natchez Times on July twenty-nine, August fifth, and August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, in accordance with law. Whereas two bid proposals were received and opened as follows. Irby Utilities of Baton Rouge, eighty-two thousand, ninety-four dollars. And bid number two, Curtis Stout, Shreveport, Louisiana, eighty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Whereas on September second, two thousand and twenty-one, the appointed committee of Debbie Miley, Finance Director, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, Director of Utilities, and me, reviewed the bid proposals for the pulse-closing transfer switches. And whereas the above-appointed committee members unanimously recommend the city award the bid to the lowest bidder, Irby Utilities, in the amount of eighty-two thousand, ninety-four dollars. And this ordinance was introduced on September thirteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Any additional comment, Matt?
Now, these are just switches we will hang on Kaiser Avenue, uh, that allow us to switch out the power that feeds the hospital. It will do it automatically, say we lose one circuit that the hospital's on now, it will automatically switch to another circuit. So, that, i- if they do have problems on the circuit they're on now, they would just see a blink, almost not noticeable, and then they would switch to a different circuit. Just more reliability for the hospital.
That's great.
That's awesome.
All right, it is a good piece. Uh, any public comments or questions, council? Any public, any comments? Okay, thank you for explaining that, Matt. Last piece, again, that's for introduction today, vote on a couple weeks, is ordinance number forty-eight, um, and that's Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number forty-eight of twenty-twenty-one, ordinance renaming the city street currently delineated as Pauline Street to henceforth be known as Bert Clark Street in honor of Mr. Bert Clark's life and years of service to the city, parish, and community. Whereas the street extending west to east from Welch Street to Raphael Street, which is paralleled by Vivin Street and Mandel Street in the city of Natchez is currently named Pauline Street. Whereas Mr. Clark was raised by a loving family in a community of faith on Pauline Street, and though he took up residence elsewhere throughout his life, he always considered Natchez to be his home. And whereas in honor of his extensive ties to the community, in order that future generations remember his name, it is the desire of the city to dedicate the street currently known as Pauline Street to the memory and honor of Bert Clark by renaming it Bert Clark Street. And now, therefore be it ordained by the mayor and the city council of the city of Natchez. And legal session convened that the street extending west to east from Welch Street to Raphael Street, which is paralleled, paralleled by Vivin Street and Mandel Street, currently named Pauline Street, is hereby renamed Bert Clark Street on all signage, plaits, or subdivision controls or regulations. This for introduction only.
Okay, this is, I know Councilman P T. read it, actually Councilwoman Washington, uh, Eli., I don't know if you have any comments on this. Again, it's just for introduction today.
Well, I, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna basically just let the councilman know that I did go to, it's only like, I think, seven homes that's on that street, and they're all for naming the streets. Basically, it's relatives of Mr. Bert Clark, so they're all for it. So, I just want to let you all know.
Okay. Uh, any other comments, questions, council?
I think it's a great honor. I know him well. I think it's a great honor to have the street named his honor.
Okay, um, any public comments? All right, seeing none, again, this is, uh, will be voted on by the city council in just a couple weeks. Okay? All right. Um, I think we're just moving on to announcements. Oh, okay, they put this up there, all right. I guess we got it. We wanna start something on Thursdays of, of every week, prayer with the mayor, um, and from seven-thirty to seven-forty-five, and we're starting this Thursday. All right, so it'll be something brief, and I know people have reached out, something going on, First Baptist Amulet, another person on school board, uh, reached out to me saying that, um, that, um, you know, that, that, you know, wanna pray on, on one of the city's facilities. So, this will just be a call-in number that we'll release hopefully, uh, tomorrow, and if there any hiccups, we'll let you know. But again, I didn't know they had that in there. But, uh, prayer with the mayor is what we plan to start this Thursday, okay? I'm sorry, now, that's something different. First Baptist Amulet is having a solemn moment, uh, of prayer. Is that tomorrow?
Tonight, I believe.
Is that tonight? Oh, that's tonight, yeah, yeah, they did it tonight. But this is not, this, this is, you could call in from your, your, your home, you know, yeah, wherever you are, so this is not physically gathering together, but just a little conference, just a little conference call. So, we'll release the number and all of that, uh, for people to join in. I know that we've seen some, some recent things that happen and, uh, you know, so we'll come together and pray.
That's nice. Pray for our city, we need that, Mayor.
Right. Right. Uh, NSU's first game, and I think these are the rest of their home games. Um, the first game is a Saturday at six P M., UT Martin. Um, certainly, if you're in town, let's support our local college, all right? Because not every, and this is true, right? Not every, uh, and I should say, many municipalities don't have not just a college, but the one to the caliber of the Northwestern State University, so let's support it six P M. Uh, this Saturday, and then those other games as well. Wanna be in support of that. I think we have a couple more. Hey, and Natchez Annual Car Show, um, is the first and second, uh, coming up, uh, pretty soon. We'll have another meeting by then, so we'll announce it again. Um, and it's, I think it's on the city of Natchez, Go Natchez app, um, but just wanna let everybody know about that. It's a free event, um, so, so come and do that. Also, wanted to announce a run for Bert. It's gonna be, and this is who we, you know, you just read the ordinance, you heard the ordinance about the street naming. Bert, if you don't know, he's, um, he died, um, in a tragic accident, what is that, in May or April?
April twenty-fifth, May.
Oh, April twenty-seventh. All right, and so, they're raising, uh, money for a scholarship and, um, certainly want the city to participate in this. We'll have a, about four runner, runners. Usually Steve and Stacy does everything, so, uh, hopefully they could be available to do it on October second. At NSU's campus, we didn't see a time anywhere?
Eight A M.
Eight A M., okay.
Eight A M., again, so six-thirty.
Okay, check in six-thirty, and then eight A M. for the, the run walk, okay? Uh, is there anything else, Steve? All right, and we got the shred, community shred service coming up on this Friday from ten to two. Still pushing regroup for everybody, um, so please download that. We also are monitoring, uh, is it Tropical Storm Nicholas? We're monitoring that. Um, so, uh, we're prepared to do what we need to do as a city. We think we're gonna get some rain from it, so we just want everybody to be on guard with that. See one about the Natchez Parish Fair and Rodeo? What date? I can't see that. What date is that showing, Steve?
September twenty-sixth to October second.
Oh, September twenty-sixth through October seventh. Okay, good.
Second.
Second. September twenty-sixth through the second of October. Okay? All right, um, I do, we were supposed to say this last time, I know the hours were spent. I had an inside thing there, I'm not gonna let it out, but, um, Ms. Ms. Rock, with you, um, that was a Hopeville announcement, we would, I say announcement update. We were supposed to give the last minute, but the council wanted to bog me down on the water sector program, and we since were able to lift that up. But, um, is, is that update, uh, Ms. Ms. Rock?
As of August nineteenth, I did receive the approval from the state fire marshal's office indicating that everything has been approved, that, um, the developers for Hopeville has submitted. We have a permit, we're ready to issue it, I'm just waiting for them to send me that stamp plan so that I can make sure that everything is in compliance, but right now, we are good to go.
And I, I did notice, the grass had gotten high, I think it's been cut a couple times since we made that known to them. There are a couple couches we're gonna deal with, I think, I mean, we know it's not somebody from Hopeville Apartments, but somebody dropped some apartment, I mean, some, uh.
Red couches.
Uh, some couches off over there, so we'll, we'll try to address that, okay? But that, that is the update that we have for you. All right, uh, long night, uh, this time we hear motion to adjourn.
Our motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, meeting is adjourned, thank you, folks.